Can, can everybody see the PowerPoint?
I can see it. This is Patricia.
All right, Patricia, you can see it. Okay, good.
Yeah.
Alrighty, well, uh, we really don't have too much to discuss except for the one, the only item on the agenda, which is the, uh, the proposed subdivision ordinance amendment and, um, uh, Killingsworth is rolling. Um, the chair will not be at the meeting today. And the vice chair, which is, uh, Pat Hayes will be here, but he may not be here until after the agenda's over or towards the end of that. And our secretary won't be here. So, right now, we're looking at four and a half. The half attendees, the other half that we need is Kara Boyd Connors. And she indicates, she's in court at 1:30, so we're hopeful that she'll, she'll be out. So, we're rocking along in first meeting of 2022. But I think, well, I may text everybody. I don't know if they'll do any good, but, because I think the ones that I referred to not being here are likely not to be. But I'll send out a, I'll send out a missive if, if we can't get number five.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna put my, uh, video off, but if you need me to be back on, just let me know.
Okay.
I mean, I'm gonna be here for the meeting. I'm just, uh, while we're working through some of these logistics, I'm working on a letter.
Okay.
All right, thanks.
Well, good. Uh, there's, there's a good chance we'll get five. So, yeah, I'd say, I would've said it's a toss-up, and now I'm gonna give a slight odds, slightly better than a 50/50 chance. That's good. That's real good. Here's number three rolling in here. I suspect, uh, Pat will be on, I'd say Mark should be on here soon. And Pat will be on here probably towards the end, somewhere towards the end of the agenda. Oh, I just wanted to come on and say again, for those that are new on here, that we have four attendees for our agenda session. And really, our agenda session is only one item today, which is the, uh, an item that the whole board will have to address, and that is a subdivision ordinance amendment for notice requirements. Um, and we're good if and when Pat Hayes shows up, because he will be the fifth voter and constitute a quorum, and we can do business. But right now, we're awaiting, uh, that unless anybody wants, wants to talk about anything on the agenda session here.
Uh, just a question here, man. Are we, uh, if, if we, even if we have a quorum, will, will we be voting on anything on the, uh, ordinance that we're looking at?
No, what we're, the, I, the hope, I suppose, today would be for all the issues to be ironed out in discussion by the board members.
Okay.
And then for the board members to say, yeah, this is what we propose to have a public hearing on in the February meeting.
Okay, that's what I was thinking. Okay, thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Mr. McLendon, how many, um, public hearings are we required to have before we can, um, send it on?
I think only have to have one. If we announce it and advertise it as a public hearing, if we can get to the point to, to propose to do that in February, then, then it can be addressed and you can adopt the resolution or not, as the case may be when we get to that point.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Well, it looks like we have our quorum, Mr. Hayes just showed up. I just admitted him. So, if that's the case, if we have all five, I suppose, uh, the chair, which in this case will be Mr. Hayes, because the chairman is out today. And, um, so, Pat, I guess it's up to you to start the meeting here in a couple of minutes, I suppose.
Okay, good. I, I, I'll just introduce it a little bit. I got four o'clock on my watch, uh, Van. First of all, I apologize for being late. Uh, I don't know how many of y'all know the name Silver City Courts, but it is a housing development that started in 1940 in North Little Rock, a lot of modern income. And, uh, they just now started, gosh, I guess, a $30 million project to tear all those, uh, old, uh, affordable housing, uh, development down and start it again. And I had a chance to get to the microphone. I was invited as a former mayor, which was kind of fun, particularly following Mayor Hartwick, which I got a day or two in. So, any event, let me, uh, thank y'all for, uh, obviously being here. I guess I make the quorum. So, uh, let me call the meeting order and, uh, uh, I think we probably have the minutes, if I'm not correct. Is that the first on the agenda item?
Yes, sir. It's, uh, the December 14th minutes.
All right, uh, if anybody has had, if all of y'all have had a chance to review that, if I can have a motion, uh, or a motion to amend, either one.
I'm going to approve the minutes of the December 14th, 2021 meeting.
Is there a second?
Second motion, Mark Wilson.
All right, Mark, uh, uh, motion made by Christie and seconded by Mark. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any of opposition?
Aye.
Uh, I didn't, I don't think I heard any opposition. So, uh, the motion's approved. Van, what's second on our list? Is that, uh, I know we had Christie. I, I got up here and I left my notes, uh, somewhere else. So, let me, uh, let me ask on the agenda, what's the next item?
Uh, the only item on today's agenda, the official item, is a proposed ordinance, subdivision ordinance amendment regarding notification requirements.
All right, uh, yeah, let me, uh, uh, ask for, uh, I guess, discussion on that issue. Anybody, uh, care to, to discuss it before we make a motion? Or is there someone that might want to make a motion?
I do have, um, uh, is it, so we're discussing the notification amendments now, am I correct?
Right, correct.
Um, I do have, um, some comments, um, uh, that I believe on the final draft, the table of content also needs to be changed to reflect the new section under general provision. I'm sure Mr. McLendon, you thought that.
Yes, we were, we're.
In the, okay, okay. And also about the subdivision applicant's affidavit for notices would need to be changed to remove the budding. And I just wanted to make sure, we had talked about that before, and I'm sure you're, you've checked that document.
Is, is there anything, uh, that we need to do by way of amendment, Van, on what Christie's comments were?
I don't think so. If, if, if the, or if you, if you adopt or you propose to adopt the amendment with whatever changes you make today, all of that'll be included in the final draft when we get to the February public hearing, if that's what we end up having.
All right, uh, does anybody want to make a motion on this issue, and then we can go into discussion?
I just asked for clarification, so I'm, I'm looking at the documents that we had delivered to us. So, say we're looking at the section 1.10, notice requirements. Um, it looks like that we have options. So, is that where we're gonna, are we gonna discuss what those options are? For example, it says applicant subdivider shall submit proof that at least six, 15, 30 days notice. So, are we making the decisions about those, those options that are in there?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Sorry, thank you for clarifying that.
Well, I moved to adopt the subdivision and development code notification requirement amendment as we will write, uh, which shall then be forwarded to the quorum court for, for final adoption.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it. This is Patricia Black.
Yeah, Patricia, uh, motion made by Christie and seconded by Patricia. Uh, now we're in discussion.
Mr. Chairman, um, uh, the, the motion was made to approve the whole thing and seconded, uh, but there's individual questions to be answered before you get to that point, I think.
Okay, that's what I was, that's what I was curious about. Are we just moving into making those decisions? So, it was premature to make the motion? Is that what you're saying?
I think so.
Then I'll make, I'm sorry.
I mean, I'm happy to rescind my second if, if it was premature.
Well, I, my, I, I think you could do it either way, Van, but, uh, uh, because you can make a motion, and now we can make a motion to amend, uh, the, uh, you know, the, uh, so, maybe we could take these individually, uh, and, uh, in discussion. We'll just, uh, leave this on the table, and then, uh, our motions to amend, uh, you know, as we go through the different, uh, aspects that we have to make decisions on.
Okay.
All right, with that, uh, let's, uh, what do we want, what's, what, how would you want to go forward with the first decision? Uh, with the first, yeah, the, the, the choices that we've got to make?
Well, Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yeah, Mark.
Since Ms. Ains has been leading the subcommittee, can she kind of give us an update on what they've talked about, where they are, and, and, and what we're looking at today?
Sure. Christie, do you mind?
No, not at all. Um, I, I guess, Mark, uh, I'm sorry, Commissioner, you had, you, you were wanting me to discuss it because I had, um, brought this forth before the committee because of the, uh, community concerns regarding notification not being adequate enough if it's, uh, currently. And, um, so, the community is very much in favor of a 30-day time period. Um, that's one of the options in, uh, section 1.10, number one, that the applicant subdivider shall submit proof at least 30 days' notice has been given. And the reasons are, um, it's adequate time for the property owners to hear of the proposed development. And it takes into account vacations. Some people have one and a half, two-week vacations. Um, I also spoke with Mr. McLendon about this, and he indicated that this would not be a problem. Um, in fact, uh, the planning board schedule, uh, there would be fewer. We'd have nine versus 12, and they would be more productive. Also, very notably, there would be no more conflicts with the quorum court meeting. And I thought that was a very good point. Um, there really is not a valid reason, in our opinion, to not go with the 30 days versus any other time. It, it's a minor inconvenience that we'll need to change our, our schedule as a planning board, from what I understand. We've already set our schedule for the year. We would just have to go in and amend that. I think that could be easily done. So, that, that's the first change. Um, and then the next change that is very much desired is the distance. And the property owners out there are very much in favor of a 1,300-foot distance of radius. 200 feet is essentially a budding, and that's according to Little Rock planning staff. 500 feet would not have even alerted, for example, one of the property owners who are directly adjacent to the Paradise Valley development. I looked on Pages, and I verified, uh, this statement using, um, the scale on Pages. A thousand feet wouldn't even have gotten the notification to be triggered. And I think this can happen a lot, uh, out in the county, um, when there are new developments, and they carve out a piece of that development and a small section of a larger tract, um, leaving a possibly larger tract between the edge of, uh, or boundary of the proposed development and the property owner, which, in my example, was a real-world case. So, Mr. McLendon, um, researched the concern about the price and how much it would cost if it happened to encompass a larger number of people, um, a, a large-scale development, for example. Well, the, um, the cost that, um, is incurred by the applicant is, um, currently, they have to pay, if they choose this method, um, $25 per household by an abstract company plus the mailing. So, um, Mr. McLendon found out that, um, if, if the applicant were to choose using the assessor's parcel data, I think that would make it very doable. And I believe that the county would provide that list. And, and all that would remain is for them to pay for the mailing. And, um, and so, we're asking for return receipt requested. Um, and that, I called the Roland Post Office, and per household, that is $7.38. So, at the example of the meeting back in November, um, the example of 50 houses within a half-mile, and that would total $1,600 at the cost of 32, 33, that would be the part abstract company fee. So, assuming that the list from the planning department comes without a fee, the cost for 50 houses becomes $369 versus 1,600, so a great cost saving. And Mr. McLendon is talking. I don't know if, if you're talking at me, Mr. McLendon, or if you want to unmute. No? Okay. Um, so, uh, I, I wanted to, 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 to report about that, that we feel like the cost concern has been quelled by the fact that, um, that they can save money by using the list from the assessor's, um, office. And we would, I think, return, a certified mail return receipt requested would be a wonderful, um, addition to the notification. Uh, a return receipt requested, as you all probably know, it provides additional proof that the mail was delivered to the right person and physically received and signed it. So, the courier will log the details about the delivery attempt, and there are generally two before a final notice. And the post office will hold the mail for 15 days, upon which time the certified mail will be marked as undeliverable and returned to the sender. So, certified mail, uh, return receipt requested just adds additional proof that the mail was delivered to the right person. And, um, the, the post office mails the, the sender, which would be the applicant, a green card showing that the signature was indeed collected. Or the sender will receive a letter back marked "undeliverable" with a log of delivery attempt. So, this would just show due diligence on the part of applicant. Um, they could, return receipt could also have the added benefit of highlighting possible weaknesses in the notification process by mail and/or the accuracy of property list from abstract firms, uh, just in an effort so that we can achieve better notification rates. Um, I just have, uh, three more things to say here.
Ms. Ains?
Yeah.
May I ask a question on that, on that point, on the return receipt requested?
Yes.
Where, we're asking if they send it in that form, but are we, are we, is the intent here to require that we get positive confirmation that they, that the, uh, the addressee received it?
They will turn in the, their list and the receipt to the county, as I understand it.
Okay, but if somebody doesn't, doesn't ever respond, or, I mean, doesn't, you know, say somebody on parcel out there, but they don't actually live there, and they're just never there to take receipt, is that?
They're not penalized.
Okay, but, yeah, the, 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 I guess, petitioner in it, or whatever, whatever we call the?
Yeah, the applicant.
The applicant is not, uh, uh, not penalized by someone not responding to the notice?
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, sure. Um, and the other change that is strongly encouraged is the signage. The 48 by 48-inch sign, or four by four, um, is a compromise from the original four by eight, and this is okay with the community. Um, this is also the standard size used by the city of Little Rock for large-scale developments of over 10 acres. And also, there's an option in our changes about the posting, and, uh, the 30-day, uh, posting is the same as the city of Little Rock requirement. And we've added something about the website. Um, I, I feel like this should be the same as the mailing requirement, just for simplicity and consistency sake. So, I was thinking 30 days, um, should be posted on the website prior to the public hearing. Um, and also, uh, the last change option is the number eight, the proof of notice to be filed with staff, um, six days prior to the, prior to the public hearing. And that is also a city of Little Rock, um, requirement. So, I felt like to give staff a little more time if they needed it. Um, so, those are, um, the, the options that, uh, are, are hoped for. And, um, if y'all have any questions, please let me know, but everything else looks great, um, all the, these other changes. And, um, I'm hoping that we can, I, I know we've talked about this several times, um, several months, and I hope that, uh, the board will consider, uh, my comments, and hopefully, we can vote on this today, as Mr. McLendon indicated, and, um, try to get it, uh, our public hearing, um, set for next month. That'd be, that'd be wonderful. And I think these upgrades will be very, very popular with the community in Plaski County. Again, notifications are important and, um, for people to know about what's going on in their community. And I think this, these upgrades will help that effort. Thank you.
Uh, do I have any commissioners that want to, uh, make any comments? Uh, I guess we have.
Well, Mr. Chairman, this is Mark Wilson again. Uh, I, I think the idea here that is, is we just need to agree on the wording for what we'll, we will vote on next month. So, it's really, there's, I don't, I don't see a need to have a vote today. It's just that we come to agreement on the right language. Is that correct?
Uh, I, I think that's probably the biggest part of the purpose. I don't know, I know Christie's been driving the boat quite a bit. So, uh, I know she, she likes to move, but, uh, this is, uh, this is something that, since they're just barely a quorum here, that, that I would be inclined to, uh, we'll say, discuss it and, and see what kind of a consensus that we can get. But, uh, obviously, uh, that's three, how many commissioners we've got, uh, board members, uh, Van? There are what, eight of us or nine of us?
Yeah. Van, can you shed light on that question about whether we, if, whether there's any point to voting today when we're just really trying to get the language to vote for the first hearing next month, right?
Well, to answer the chairman's question, there's four absent members.
Okay.
So, you have five of, you have five of nine voters present. And, um, as Commissioner, a board member, Wilson's question is, I, I suppose, uh, the, the chat, the, the charge for the board today is to look at the, the outstanding items that are in question and see if you can come to consensus on it. And if you can, I suppose, you have a choice either to table it and get, hope to get more members here on the February meeting, discuss it and verify it, and put it on the March public hearing. Or if you feel comfortable that the five of you that are here today are, uh, in agreement that the certain elements that we're at question here can be agreed upon, then you could pass a resolution adopting it with those changes and putting it on, uh, the, the public hearing, uh, for the February meeting.
Okay, so, the first step is to adopt a resolution with this language for amending the subdivision ordinance, and then the first reading is in February, at the February meeting?
Well, it'll be, it won't be a first reading. It'll be a public hearing for this ordinance amendment. And at the end of that public hearing, if the board feels satisfied that they want to proceed, then they'll vote on it. And, uh, once they do that, uh, if it's a affirmative vote, uh, then that'll be forwarded on to the quorum court for adoption.
Oh, okay, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, well, what are the, I guess, it, it, you know, I'm, Mr. Chairman, I want, I want to, I want to understand, what are the elements we need to, to nail down today in this language? And what are, what, if any pitfalls, the staff sees in what we've got before us?
Well, I, we ought to, how many of the, and I'm, I'm at a bit of a loss. I came directly from that, uh, shovel turning or, you know, or ceremony. And unfortunately, Van, I don't have the, uh, resolution in front of me. Can, can someone just shoot, uh, shoot a copy? Uh, I don't know if anybody else is, is lacking, but if.
Y'all can put it on the screen.
Okay, all right, that'll work. Now, why don't we do that? Why don't we put it on the screen? And then try to take these one by one?
There we go. All right. Yeah, you, can you see that?
I can see the planning board, uh, at least on mine.
Um, well, they, you should be able to, on the screen, it should be the ordinance amendment showing.
That's not showing up yet. It looks like it's just that title slide right now. I think you need to go down about one, two, three, four, five, maybe like six slides.
Right, right. Well, I moved it to mine, but it didn't show up.
Yeah, it's still on the title slide.
There we go.
Let me do it.
There you go. So, um.
Mine is still just showing the title slide.
Yeah, the, uh, the, on my screen, it shows the, the title, uh, the beginning slide.
All right, it's stuck on that. Hold on for a second.
There we go. There it is. There it is.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, I, I guess, to, to answer, there's, there's three or four places here that, uh, that the, the board will need to make a decision on. So, if you want me to just go to the first one that I see, that there's a question, then y'all can discuss that?
Yeah, that'll be a good idea, Van.
Okay, it'll be D1, and the question before the board is, uh, the, the timing of how much, uh, how much notice needs to be provided, six days, 15 days, or 30 days by the applicant?
Christie, you're, you're argued, I mean, you, your comments were for the 30-day, right?
Yes, that's correct. Um, because of, to taking it to account, people going on vacation. Sometimes people have one and a half, two-week vacations. Um, and also, having a 30-day schedule would, um, would, we would have fewer and more productive meetings, nine versus 12. And, um, there would be no more conflicts with the quorum court. Uh, we would just have to amend our schedule, um, to nine meetings. Um, so that, those are the, the main arguments, um, for the 30 days.
Anybody else want to comment on, uh, on the days, uh, you know, that, uh, I guess that's our first issue that we need to talk about?
So, I guess my question is, currently, say I'm someone who wants to come in for a subdivision review, um, how, how far in advance am I coming in to get my materials to the staff to look at?
Six days.
Right now, it's a six-day turnaround? Okay.
All right, we're still on the days. Uh, does anybody have any more comments on, uh, on what they feel? Or, uh, have any motions, uh, or, uh, want to just pass?
Well, just, just so I understand, uh, the, is that going to be an undue burden on, on developers? I mean, or are they gonna cry foul? Because we're not here just representing, you know, we're, we're here, we're here to represent all property owners, whether they be people with a home on property or people developing. So, will that be a, a big concern?
Well, Mr. Chairman, this is, this is Joe White. Could I jump in here?
Uh, yes.
Uh, you know, I, I represent Rick Ferguson. Uh, you know, I, I represent Rick Ferguson, who's not here today at a conflict. When I said I would sit in and weigh in. And so just talking about the, the days, the notice, I would agree that six days is not enough. That's what we've been for however long. Six days is not enough. Little Rock is fifteen days. I would tell you thirty days is too long. To me, and again, representing Rick, and if you think about Rick, he, he right now, today, is the biggest developer in the county. He's got Waterview Estates, he's got Lakeview West, he's got Paradise Valley. So I feel like he's the most impacted person, person developer today. May not be in five years, but he is today. And so I would tell you that, that when we're working for him and getting things ready to submit to the county, it's very handy to have twelve meetings a year. It's very logical to submit on the first day of the month and know that you're going to get a hearing that month. Sometimes you have to take a deferral for certain reasons, could be a lot of things, including not having a quorum. And so the minute you go to nine meetings and then we miss a meeting and we're down to eight meetings, it gets pretty tough on the developer side. So again, I don't, I don't strictly want to speak in terms of the developer. I, I want to see it both ways. But going to thirty days is going, you know, we're going from six days to thirty. That's such a big jump. Most every other county or city that we work in is typically fifteen days. And I think that's, I think that's fair. To me, that's of all the things that we're talking about. If I went down the list of the, of the several things, from the signage to the noticing, even the distance, I think that, I think that the biggest impact that we're talking about in this change is the notices. If we went to thirty days and go on to the nine meetings, I, I personally would like to see us at fifteen days and maintain our twelve meetings.
Any other comments right now on this fifteen, thirty day issue? From, let me ask the commissioners first, our board members rather that, you know, whether you've got any, any, any questions or any input on fifteen versus thirty. Van, do you want to make any comments?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, we would agree that the fifteen days is optimum time period because that allows us to keep the twelve months and be able to accomplish a filing deadline, a notice deadline, and a planning board meeting all in the same month, which is pretty rare, really. And then, and all the, all the, the agencies involved, I don't think, I don't know of any that do it within one month. Usually probably six weeks or maybe even more than that. I don't know. But I think the fifteen days allows adequate notice because the, you know, they'll be putting signage up. They'll be on the, be on our website. They'll be getting a certified return receipt. However, the notice was, the address E was attained. So I'd say that's a, that's a, that's a, it, it looks like it's a fair way to address it from the staff perspective and one that's workable for us.
Mr. Chairman, I agree with fifteen days too. I, I think having twelve meetings in a year is, is important and matching up with quorum court. And having clear, clear, I guess, milestones each month, that, that makes it straightforward. And fifteen days is adequate, I think.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Christie, yes. I, I think that sometimes the stakeholders in the county, the taxpayers, they aren't always considered. And we, we do seem to be heavily weighted towards the developer. It would be nice in this instance to make accommodations for the stakeholders once in a while. And I think if the thirty days fails, that at least the, the distance needs to be the thirteen hundred feet in order to give more people notice in the area. Because thirty days was, was a good amount of time for the word to get around out in that rural area of the county and people to talk to each other. They live far apart from each other. I, I just felt like that the thirty days would be, would be a good number. And I don't think, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. McClendon, that the applicant would still file at the same time every month. Is that correct?
What, what's your question? The applicant would file the same time every month if what?
If we went with thirty days.
No. Well.
The applicant's filing date would not change.
The, the filing, it's hard to say because we, we have to figure out what the schedule is for nine meetings and how that would work. So it, it, it would make it cumbersome from the staff perspective because we might end up with a filing deadline for one meeting when we're having another meeting. You know what I mean? It would not, it would not be as easy to maintain some consistency with, I don't think.
Okay, I'm not sure I understand that, but I totally trust what you're saying there. Anyway, I feel like the thirty days should stand based upon the fact that it does give more than adequate enough time for the, the people to know about it. And, and it would protect the developer as well, that they could, they could say, well, we gave them adequate time.
Mr. Chairman, could. Okay, thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to echo Christie's comment there. To me, the, you know, the developer's been working on this thing for quite some time. They've, you know, made their plans, done all kinds of work. It's been something in, in progress for the developer for quite some time. I, I don't know how long. But for the residents, it's a total surprise when this period of time starts. They're starting from nothing other than the sign and the other information. So we've got one side with plenty of time to get ready and the residents with very little time, with fifteen days. It doesn't seem balanced to me.
Any, any other comments at this point?
This is, this is Patricia Blake, Mr. Chairman. I just had one question. When we say days, are we saying business days, calendar days? I'm sure that somewhere else in the code, it's been delineated, but I just am not familiar with it. What, what are we, what are we saying?
About calendar days.
Calendar days.
Okay, just wanted to make sure I knew that, understood that.
Sure.
Make a comment?
Yes.
I really do feel that thirty days is a good amount of time also because people are out of town. I mean, people go on vacations for two weeks or more. So, you know, they really need to know. I, I would have benefited from having more notice as well for myself, my own situation. But I really do feel thirty days is, is appropriate. And everything takes time, you know, when you're, you're doing projects, they all take time. But it's better to get it right the first time than to have issues down the road. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any, I think, Patricia, you've got your hand up.
Well, I, I had an opportunity to ask my question, so I can, I'll take it down. Thank you.
Okay. Yes.
Comment. As a resident of rural Plaski County, for my profession, I travel extensively across the United States. So there's often time to what I am not, I apologize for that, not residents for two weeks or longer to check the mail. I, I would feel that thirty days would give me an opportunity to check my mail, be able to be notified and then do any research or seek any, you know, guidance on how I would like to either accept a protest of any developments going on, you know, related to my property.
Sure. Okay, right now, you know, we've got, we've gotten some input from commissioners. We've got five commissioners that are available right now, but we're, you know, four short. Does anyone, any commissioner right now want to make any comments?
Well, I'm.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. This is Patricia. You go ahead.
Just going to say, you know, of course, I'm relatively new to the commission, but I do not have a problem with us meeting twelve months out of the year. In a way, I find with other commissions that I work with, it's almost better to have a consistent meeting day every month. Otherwise, people don't have it on their calendar, so I don't think that's an issue for me. The thing I would say is that I, you know, I come from a regulatory side as well with historic preservation, but I am a little bit, I'm inclined to go, I mean, basically going from six days to fifteen, we've doubled it there. If we go to thirty, that's six times longer, five times longer. But, you know, my thought is when someone misses that deadline, they are having to wait even longer. And with the, I don't know if we can, if we can do, you know, as we get down to some of the other decisions, but if we have our fifteen day notification, I think that's where I'm landing, is feeling a little bit more comfortable as we're moving from six days to fifteen. That's, that's how I'm feeling right now. And also that I don't have an objection to us meeting every month. I think consistency in meetings is better for us, frankly.
Well, the chair, you know, would agree with that. You know, I think we're, you know, we signed on to try to help the public, particularly the unincorporated areas in terms of future development of the, of the county. And this is a pretty, you know, pretty big step in what the material is that we're discussing today. So I'm, I'm, just for information's sake, the chair is kind of leaning in the same direction that you are, Patricia. But I still want to listen to commissioners. Mark, I know you said fifteen days. Christie, you're thirty. I, you know, my, again, my inclination is, is because there's just barely a quorum, is to try to see if, if we don't have a, you know, a majority. Well, I know from parliamentary standpoint, we could do that. But my inclination is to, is to try to discuss this, you know, get more information from, you know, certainly anything Christie want to say. And then, you know, I'm, I'm inclined to hold these decisions until we get more commissioners. But that's just the chair's thinking right now, you know, from a parliamentary standpoint.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I wanted to add, you know, one more kind of perspective that we, my wife and I and our two boys used to live in a, in a subdivision over in Chenal. And we wanted to, this, I'm going off on a little bit of a tangent, but forgive me. But we wanted to, we had a, just a bare concrete patio on the back of our house. And we wanted to add a, a covered deck, basically, and make it a covered patio with a roof on it that connected to our house. And we had to appeal to the Chenal, I mean, we had to, I mean, that's a variance to, or that was a, that had to be approved by the Chenal Property Owners Association. So we made our request. They made some nitpicky, just stupid reason to deny it. So we had to wait and we had to clarify what really shouldn't have needed clarification. And we had to wait another month to do that, to be heard again. And then we, they had more nitpicky things. We had to wait another month. And then another month after that, and finally, we said, forget it, and we just moved. And I fear if we throw a bunch of roadblocks in the way, we're really stifling, you know, development. And part of our charge is making sure the business of the county gets done. And so I, I agree with Ms. Blake that we're doubling, we're more than doubling the, the time of notice. And I think we're all fine with extending to a thirteen hundred foot radius. I, I think tho, those, those are big steps in favor of notice, proper notice to community members. And if we, you know, feel over time, you know, in a year or two, that that's fifteen days isn't enough notice, then we can amend it then. But it's harder to, to take back something, to ratchet back something if you, if you go too far. So with the, the recommendation of the staff and, and those, my other points in mind, I'm, I'm in favor of fifteen days.
All right, we have, you know, we have, I guess I've put us in a position to have the, you know, we've got a motion made, seconded to adopt the whole thing. You know, maybe, I'm trying to think of how to back up on this because these things are. Patricia, Christie, you mind if we do this one bite at a time to determine whether or not?
That's fine. If you want, if Patricia needs to rescind and I need to rescind my motion when I vote on them one at a time, that's fine.
Yeah, why don't we, that might be simpler for everybody.
That's fine. Yeah, that's fine by me too. I'm happy to rescind my, my second to the original motion by Ms. Ains.
Okay.
My motion, if I may be able to make another.
Sure. You have the floor.
All right, then I move for the thirty day notice on section 1.101. I know that's going to fail, but I, I just have to do that because I feel the people of the community deserve that.
Is there a second to that motion?
Mr. Chairman, can I make a comment?
Yes.
Okay, this is Lynn Corley, and I actually live next door to the Paradise Valley proposed subdivision. And it sounds like to me, I'm hearing a lot of, well, we really think that fifteen days is good enough, but it, it's the thirty day notice that the people in the community, that this is impacting significantly. That, those are the voices that also need to be heard.
Absolutely.
And this is, this is impacting my property, my home for the rest of my life.
Yeah, that, this is forever. So thirty days notice?
Yeah.
I'm so, I'm sorry. Could you identify yourself, please?
I'm Clayton Moore.
Okay.
And I own the property that Paradise Valley is about to try to dump a hundred thousand gallons of effluent in a day. So yeah, thirty days to let people know about it, that's probably not enough.
I agree. We travel throughout the summer significantly. And six days, nobody knew about it. And when you live out in the county, you're not door to door with neighbors. So you're not sitting around the table with every neighbor talking. So it took us several weeks for us to even find out what was going on. Well, now, we all have begun to be friends and we're talking all the time. But before that, we're out in a rural setting. We're not talking to, we're not out drinking coffee with our neighbors because we're too far away from them.
Sure.
So none of us knew.
Not an urban area.
Let me try to get control of the meeting again. I'm sorry. But if you've got a comment and you're not a commissioner or a board member, if you try to make those as abbreviated as you can, the chair would appreciate it.
Okay, well, then I make my plea that I think thirty days is ample, if not enough.
All right. Christie, have you made, you, last I recall, Christie made a motion for the fifteen days, and, and I did not hear a second.
It was for thirty days, Mr. Chairman.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, thirty days, you're correct. Christie made a motion for thirty days, and, and I did not hear a second.
I'll second Christie's motion.
All right, motion made and seconded. Now, any, any more discussion on this motion?
And I will add, I'm sorry, I was traveling earlier from court in Hot Springs. I apologize, I couldn't chime in. But, I mean, as a practicing lawyer, thirty days is typically standard in any court proceeding. I know that we talked about what, what Little Rock or other counties do, but typically in any legal proceedings, thirty days is notice, sufficient notice in several settings. And that gives the respondent time to, you know, collect any evidence or opposition or representation, whatever that is. It gives applicants or whomever sufficient time to respond to a legal process. And I think that if the Arkansas Supreme Court thinks thirty days is sufficient, I think that it should be sufficient for the, the, the commission here. So I, I encourage. I, I encourage the commissioners to reconsider 30 days. I think the community, um, has, um, has a long-term effect, um, when things are not brought forth in a timely matter as opposed to a developer where there, um, there's a economic and financial interest, which is still being met. Um, and it's still being, you know, executed and acquired, but yet it gives, it balances the interest of the people. And I think as commissioners, we have to, we have to do that, consider that in a way that maybe, maybe that's a little bit heavier than a developer, when you have individuals who, who may not, um, develop hundreds of properties a year. And so that process may not be, um, as, as, you know, it's, it's a new event in their life. So when you have some, someone building or encroaching upon their, um, use of enjoyment of their land, in, in their opinion, then you want to balance that a little bit and take that into consideration. And so I don't think extending it, you know, 14, 15 more days, um, is, is, is causing any, any disturbance in, and it's not impacting, impacting them significantly. Um, so I think that we should reconsider that. That's just, that's just my opinion.
All right, motion made and seconded, uh, now for, uh, recommending 30 days. Uh, yeah, any other commissioner have any comments? Uh, hearing none, I'll, uh, call the vote on the motion. Uh, let me just, uh, well, go ahead. I, I, I want to explain my, my vote at this point. Uh, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm inclined to, to abstain. Uh, I, I really think that there needs to be uh, more of our commission rather than just a fair majority. Uh, so for that reason, I'm gonna abstain, uh, and, and, and defer to, you know, next, uh, meeting where, you know, important decisions like this can be made with more of us commissioners, uh, available. Now, now with that, I'll call for the vote unless anybody else has any comments. Uh, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, let me identify yourselves one at a time. Uh, Christie, I'll let you start off.
Uh, aye.
Christie's an aye, Kara's an aye, is there any other ayes? Any other ayes besides Kara and Christie? Okay, motion fails. Uh, the next item, are, are we still on the same item? I, I don't know if we, anybody wants to make a motion on this, or, or you heard my, you know, uh, uh, reason for not voting, or at least abstaining?
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chairman, uh, the, the other votes, uh, there were two ayes and silence on the nays.
Right, well, it, it, let, let me call that. Any, any nays?
No.
This is, uh, Patricia Black is a nay.
Okay, well, the, the, the chairman is a, is a, uh, defer or abstain. I'll be here for a quorum, but I'll, I'll abstain.
Okay, so that motion fails.
Right.
Can I, can I make a comment, please?
Uh, yeah, please do, but, uh,
It'll be short.
Yep, keep it short. Thank you.
Yeah, this is Meredith Hawkins. Um, I understand the procedure and I appreciate it, um, how all this works, but who's to say at the next meeting, I mean, I know everybody's busy, we all are, but who's to say at the next meeting, what if there's not a quorum? What if there's the same amount of people with the same thing? You know, three people abstaining and then two people for it. What happens? I'm just curious what happens at that point.
Well, you, you gotta have, you know, if we don't have a quorum, we can't conduct business. That's the first thing. Uh, the second thing, you know, it is that if we have a quorum, which we have this time, we can conduct business and, uh, and the, uh, the vote of the, uh, uh, three of the five, would, I guess that's, that's correct. We don't have to have a majority of the entire board, do we? Van, just a majority of those that are, uh, uh, present.
Correct.
Okay, so the three out, three out of, it takes three votes to pass, uh, a resolution, uh, at, at this point. Now, to answer your question, what happens the next meeting? You know, hopefully we can encourage people to be there, uh, uh, but business sometimes, you know, interferes with that. Uh, so there's obviously no guarantees, but, you know, we're, we're a quorum and we have the legal ability to conduct business, uh, during this meeting. And that's kind of what we're trying to do. Christie, do you have anything else?
Uh, I guess, uh, I think we have to move to the next, uh, option.
Well, yeah.
I, I, I mean, it failed, um, so I guess it'll be up for next month again.
Well, unless somebody wants to make another motion, uh, that's the only thought that I had. So if, if there's no other motion, I'm sorry.
Can I say something?
Yeah, please be brief. I'm, I'm trying to kind of keep this, you know, we, we certainly want your input, but, uh, we're, we, we want to defer right now to the commissioners, but go ahead, uh, and identify yourself when you make the comments.
Okay, Mont Seeger. And, um, the math is not adding up. Oh, I heard two, uh, pros and one nay and one abstaining.
I think we had, I think we had two nays. I think, uh, uh, what, Patricia, were you a nay?
She was a nay.
Yeah, I was a nay and, um, Commissioner Wilson was a nay.
And I was a nay. So we've got, you know, that, that's the main.
Okay, okay.
All right, now, if anybody want, else wants to make a motion on this issue, uh, the floor is open. If not, we will move to, you know, defer this and, uh, there will be a deferring of this until the next, uh, board meeting. No, hearing no motions, the next issue, Van, you want to just, yeah, I'm still having trouble seeing the, uh, the, the page.
Um, can you see?
Mr. Chairman, if we defer that, that item, we need to defer the whole thing. I, I mean, I don't see the point of, of, you know, agreeing on the, the radius if we haven't agreed on the base notice.
We, I mean, the, the next, what is the next item, Van? And, uh, and like?
There, there is not, well, you mean, if, there's a, the next section within the ordinance, it's a question, proposed ordinance is the, uh, number of feet of radius for the notice requirement. And it's, uh, 200 feet, 500 feet, or 1,300 feet. But I think what, uh, um, Mr. Wilson said is correct. I mean, if, I mean, this is gonna have to be deferred regardless whether y'all agree or disagree with the rest of it, because it's all, there's one section that's already in, not agreed upon.
Right.
So we can't have a public hearing yet, um, until next month, uh, until at least March. And, and that's provided we can come to an agreement in, uh, the February meeting on these, on these issues.
Uh, Christie?
Uh, I don't see why we can't press on and make some progress by, uh, approving the other changes. And then the next meeting, we'd have less to talk about. And I, I don't, I don't have a problem continuing on and trying to come to some agreement on the other things because, um,
That's fine with me or my interruption. That's fine.
That's all right. But, I mean, of course, the chair didn't, at, at this point, you've heard my opinion on, uh, on the uh, concern I have, uh, and I may even be there. This, to me, the, the days are, are pretty important, uh, you know, 15, 30 are, are staying the same. So, uh, uh, you know, let's move, we'll go ahead and take advantage of this at least another 10 or 15 minutes, uh, if that's, uh, okay with the members of the board. All right, uh, Van, the next item?
Uh, yes, this would be, uh, make sure I can see it. It's, it's a further down in section one. And so really, the, the, the charge for the board is to decide how far of, how much of a radius of notification requirement is necessary, 200 feet, 500 feet, or 1,300 feet.
All right, do I have, do I have a motion on that?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is Christie, and I move to accept the 1,300-foot radius.
Is there a second?
I'll second that motion. This is Patricia Black.
Okay, uh, thanks, Patricia. Uh, discussion? Any board member want to discuss, uh, the, the, uh, Christie's motion? All right, all in favor of, uh, 1,300 feet, uh, uh, is, is a notice distance, uh, say aye.
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 Aye, and the chair will vote on that. Is there any nays? Okay, no nays. Uh, well, Christie, we've got one thing that seems to be, uh, seems to have some universal, uh, uh, acceptance. Uh, next item, Van?
Yes, it would be, uh,
Is that number two?
Well, let's see. Well, yes, if, if you're in agreement with, uh, I guess as to whether or not what is noticed required in that. And what we have is anything with a variance or major subdivision or, uh, uh, flood hazard request. So any of those three things, a major subdivision, a flood hazard, a variance request, or any variance request.
All right, uh, if, and does anybody have any motions, uh, that they want to make on this issue? Adding any of the, adding or subtracting any of those that Van mentioned?
I move to accept the addition, uh, made by staff, or made, actually, I, I made some of the additions myself.
Okay, is there a second? Is there a second on, uh, Christie's motion?
I'll second the motion. This is Patricia Black.
All right, Patricia, discussion? Uh, all in favor, please, just rather than say aye, just, uh, say your name and let's start with Christie.
Christie, aye.
Yeah, Van, could you call a roll on the five of us, uh, so that, that I can kind of keep up with who's?
Uh, Kara Boyd-Carnes.
I, I just want to be clear, we're voting on adding the language as cited in section two, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, all right, aye.
All right.
Board Member Wilson?
Uh, aye.
And Board Member, no, uh, Ms. Black?
Aye.
Yes, that's a four oh.
I vote.
Well, well.
I don't get to vote?
Typically, the chairman does not vote unless there's a tie, but you can, I guess, if you want to.
All right, all right, all right, yeah, we, we oughta, we oughta, well, I don't know, that, this was nine of us and then was five of us, uh, yeah. So I'll defer and, uh, in, in terms of voting, uh, the chair will defer then, four zero. Next item?
The next item is the, uh, in section three, where the applicant would have the option to, um, use, utilize a combination of methods, a list of property owners within the radius outline, um, a, uh, and from like, taken from the parcel register or list from an abstract company, uh, showing the ownership of the current tax records. And I guess was the walk-around part of that. Yeah, the walk-around notice is also a pop-up. So you can send it as a return receipt or walk around, and you can obtain it by an abstract company or through the, or the records that the county planning department will provide you from the assessor's office.
All right, uh, is anyone, any board member here to make a motion?
Move to accept, um, the changes in 3A.
Is there a second? Is there a second? I'm sorry.
Are we just talking about 3A or 3A and D together?
I think we're talking about 3A, aren't we, Van?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry.
And also three.
It's, it's three and 3A, it's beginning of this.
Yes, sir, yes.
So.
Okay.
All right, uh, right now, uh, uh, anybody, anybody, well, let's just, the, are we clear on what we're voting on?
Yes, I was in Christie's motion.
Okay, we're voting on Christie's motion. Van, call a roll again.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, it's Joe White. Quick question.
Sure.
Is, is this, uh, this is on how we notify certified receipts? Is it, Van, is that the same as what Little Rock does? Where it's, we, we, we do a certi, we do a certified mail-out. We get the, get the ticket back and we take, and we, we deliver those to staff. Is it the same?
Yes.
I, I think, I think that's just from the developer standpoint, actually is reasonable.
All right, uh, Van, call a roll. I think we were in the middle of voting, if I'm not mistaken.
Ms. Ains?
Aye.
Ms. Connor?
Aye.
Ms. Black? Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Four oh.
Four oh, next item?
Okay, the, this is the, uh, this is, this is just affirmation of what we just talked about, the, how you get the notice, uh, in B, or how you do the certified letter and the, in the, uh, the walk-around, if that's what you choose to do. Um, it would be B four, and this question is, um, in terms of signage, um, in this, the size of the signage, it's either 18 inches by 24, 24 by 36, four, or 48 by 48. Um, and it's, the requirement is for, um, well, that it be posted on the property in question as well as, um, the closest principal arterial road.
I have a question, Mr. Chair.
All right, go ahead.
I, I don't think we voted on B yet. Have we, um, there's an option there for certified mail notice or certified mail notice return receipt requested.
Yes, that's correct. That's first, I guess I should say.
All right, Christie, uh, you have a motion?
I do. I'd like to move to accept the certified mail notice return receipt requested option of B, as well as to accept the rest of the changes in B as stated.
Uh, you know, one of the things I haven't been doing, and I think I'd like to, is, uh, is right now, Van, to see if, in terms of implementation of any of this from a staff standpoint, uh, would appreciate your comments, but first, Christie's made a motion and I need to hear a second. Go on, Mont.
I'll second it, but I also have a question.
Okay, uh, Christie, you got the first question, and then Patricia the second.
Okay, I, I, I don't really have a question. It was just, um, that we needed to decide on the option on B. And so I've, my motion was certified mail notice return receipt requested.
Okay, and, and Patricia seconded that. Any further, any discussion?
I just want to, I just want to ask a question. So say, for example, I decide to do a walk-around and I can get signatures, say I go to my neighbors next door down the street and have them sign that they've seen, they've seen the plans and they've gotten notice. It, does that, does this remove that option as well? I mean, are we still requiring? Or is that taken care of in a, a walk-around notice applied by Department of Planning and Development with a list of property owners within the radius outlined above? And I just wondered, so what if you do physically go to all of your neighbors and say, this is what I'm planning to do? I'm getting, this is the notice. Would that suffice as well, or is that not acceptable? Now we've limited ourselves only to certified mail, return receipt requested?
I would say it would, you, it would be acceptable, and that even the combination of both would be acceptable. If you walked around 15 and then you've certified mailed the others, then as long as we have adequate notice as required by the ordinance, uh, regardless of how you did it.
Okay, so do we, are we, are we, um, is that clear in this? You know what I mean? I mean, what if we have somebody who's doing a simple subdivision and they don't want to spend the money to do the certified mail rec, uh, return receipt requested? They, they want to physically go ahead to their neighbors within the radius and, um, I don't know, I just want to, I just want to make sure that we're not excluding that as the option, or like you said, as a combination.
Yeah, that's correct.
Just a second, just a second, Christie, Van?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, it's a, it's a combination. If, if, if the, if we have an adequate list of property owners and the, and the applicant carries, hand carries it and signs and gets the people to sign off, then that's inadequate notice according to the ordinance. If they have, it's three or four of them or somewhere else and they have to certify and mail it, then that, and they do that, then they've met the ordinance notice requirement.
So, I'm sorry, Patricia.
I'm just gonna say then, do we need to clarify? Okay, or is that, or is that understood? That a walk-around notice supplied by Department of Planning and Development with the list? That a walk around notice supplied by Department of Planning and Development with the list of property owners? I mean, do we need to say that has signed, that have signed that they have received notification, or is that automatically understood?
I'd say it's understood.
Okay, okay. Thank you, that's, that's my, I just wanted to make sure I understood it.
Okay.
Good question.
Mr. Chairman, I had a question.
Go ahead, Christie.
Um, the, to answer Commissioner Blick, I don't know if this helps or not, but on number three, it says applicant sub divider shall utilize one or a combination of the following methods.
I was, I was seeing that, but then I thought that's, you know, basically we've said that a walk around notice has a list of property owners, but we don't really say in there that, that when they've done the walk around that they have certified. I mean, physically in my neighborhood, which is not in the county, I'm in the city, we had to sign. Our neighbor literally came to our door and said, hey, I have to notify everybody in two hundred and fifty feet that I'm doing X, Y, and Z. And we actually signed something.
Okay, I think there's also a form.
So that would be, I think that's what Van was saying, is that's in the form, but I did, I'm not familiar with it, so I was not sure. So I think I, I think my question is satisfied.
All right, well, Van, I want to, I want to, unless somebody else had clarification, I, what does it say on the form with regard to the walk around? Is the person who's walking around certifying that those signatures are accurate? Or there is some other, you know, other affirmation of what was done?
I guess it's, we have a list of the property owners, and then I guess if somebody wants to question the veracity of the, of the-
Walk arounder?
Yeah, that's correct, and, or question whether there's a forgery involved, then I guess we go to the election process.
Okay.
Unfortunately, I mean, I don't know, I mean, at some point you have to, you have to hope for honesty, I suppose. I mean, and I guess if there was an issue and it was really undecided, or it was, it was, it was in question, then I imagine some of the people that was supposedly have signed it, if they didn't, that would show up. I'm pretty sure that that would, or the claim would show up at least.
I mean, that certainly would be grounds for an appeal. I mean, I would say, you know, if someone said, oh, I never signed that, then yes, that would be an opportunity to, to appeal.
Right, more if they didn't, they didn't have an adequate list, you know, then it would fail on its face, you know?
All right, so, so you're saying that there's no affirmation at the bottom of, of, of the one that's gathering the signatures as to, you know, as to the fact that they, you know, contacted and actually secured the signature?
Well, what, what we, what we can do is we can put an affidavit at the bottom of it for the applicant to sign, where they're, they're making, they're stating on the record that they did it in honest and open fashion.
All right, I'm a little confused. Are you talking about the affidavit, the affirmation?
The walk around, when, when the applicant turns us, turns in the list of the people that have signed that we provided them for, in other words, if they want us to provide it, we give them the list, they take it out, they get the signatures, they bring it back, and when they hand it to us, they sign an affidavit saying it's true, to their best of their knowledge.
Right, that, that, I just wanted to make sure that that was the walk arounder, if you want to put it that way, that actually did the information, rather than the individuals who signed, affirming that that's, you know?
Right, it's, it's an affidavit by the applicant and-
Okay, that, that, that's, that sounds fine to me. All right, you know, with that, Christie made the motion, I think, was it Patricia, did you second that?
Yes, I did.
Okay, any further discussion on the motion? Van, just call a roll.
Can we, can we reread the, the motion? Are we clear what we're voting?
Sure. Christie, your motion, right?
Okay, yes, I was making a motion to approve or accept the, on B, certified mail notice return receipt requested option, and to accept the remaining wording. Do you want me to read that, Commissioner Wilson?
No, you don't need to read it, I, you know, unless anybody else wants to have it read. Mark?
It's, it's item B, and it's, the question is whether to have it certified mail or certified mail with a return receipt.
And the motion is to have certified mail with return receipt, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, good to go.
Yeah, just call a roll, Van.
Board member Eames?
Aye.
Ms. Blick?
Aye.
Ms. Connor?
Blick, oh, I'm sorry. Eight, eight. I heard Blick and I said Blick, I'm sorry.
And Mr. Wilson?
Aye. I was afraid Boyd Connors was, was bleeping herself.
Okay, all right, next item?
It would be four, and the first question is the physical size of the sign, and the choices are eighteen by twenty-four inches, twenty-four by thirty-six inches, forty-eight by forty-eight inches.
Mr. McLendon, can I ask a question? Could you put up the next slide, please, because we're not seeing that last?
Okay, hold on here, let me see.
Thank you.
See if this, how about that?
Let's see, I think it's, I think it's on the first.
Yeah, it's still on the, it's still on-
On the first one.
Yeah, it's on seven, we want eight, I think.
I understand that we're having a little technical difficulty.
Oh, Lord, I can read it.
Perfect, thank you so much.
Yeah. All right, which one are we on, Van?
It's, it's four, four.
All right.
So we need to go, uh-
Can you not see four?
I, I can see six, seven, and-
Six, seven, and three been changed to eight, so that's what I could see too.
All right, we're, we're having a little technical difficulty. Equipment malfunction more than anything, how about that?
Yeah, I can see. And then the last of three, it looks like.
Can you, can you see?
We're on four.
Can you see four?
Yes, yes.
So that's where we are, right?
Yes, correct.
Thank you.
Let me, let me just go ahead, now that I can read, you know, the other one I couldn't, the other slide I couldn't read. I'm just going to go ahead and read what we're on. All properties involved in major subdivision applications or variance request application shall be posted with a physical sign, and then we have three choices, unless somebody wanted to, you know, amend that language, you know, eighteen by twenty-four, twenty-four by thirty-six, and forty-eight by forty-eight. In the front of the property, visible from the street, as well as on the closest arterial road. Now that's in brackets, you know, but any event, you know, what, what do the brackets mean, Van?
Why, those are, those are the options, and then this is kind of a two-part question, really. The size of the sign and where it's located is one part. The second part will be how much notice, how much in advance you have to put the sign up. And that's kind of tied to the first one we had, I think, to, in a sense.
All right, well, we can go ahead, and I think we could go ahead and get the, the size of the sign, if there's a consensus on that. Does anybody want to have a motion on the size of the sign?
I'd like to make a motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Wait a minute, okay, I got, I heard two voices, I think I heard Mark's and Christie's. I'll go ahead and say-
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I, I move that we approve forty-eight by forty-eight.
All right, is there a second to that? All right, any discussion on, any discussion on the size of the sign? Mr. McLendon, you want to call a roll?
Ms. Blick?
Aye.
Ms. Connor?
Aye.
Ms. Eames?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
All right, we're now on the days prior to the public, the planning board's public hearing. You have a choice of at least, you know, a choice of six, fifteen, or thirty, do I have a motion? And I would imagine that you could put in a different number if you wanted to, is that not, I think that would be proper. If somebody wanted to put in a different number than those that are up there.
Mr. Chairman, I, I think it should be consistent with the notice requirement, whatever that is.
Well, the notice requirement did not, you're talking about the thirty days that we did not-
Six, fifteen, or thirty, correct.
Okay, well.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I have a comment.
All right, Ms. Eames?
Uh, in the city of Little Rock, they have a fifteen day public lead, lead time, and with their signage, they have a thirty day. So it is actually different with the city of Little Rock, so I would be in favor of the thirty day, especially if the board is going to vote against the fifteen day lead time for the, the public hearing. At least, we should have the thirty day signage.
Well, that's a comment, we don't have any motion on the floor.
Mr. Chairman, I, I move that we require notice by the sign of fifteen days.
Is there a second to that? Is there a second to the fifteen day requirement?
I'll second it, I'll second it, this is Patricia Blick.
All right, motion made, seconded, discussion on the fifteen day requirement, rather than six or thirty. Not hearing any further discussion, will you call a roll, Mr. McLendon?
Ms. Eames?
No.
Ms. Blick?
Yes.
Ms. Connor?
I'm going to abstain until we know how many days notice we're going to have.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Believe the motion fails.
Yeah, motion fails, and, and unless somebody wants to make another motion, I would put that in the deferral category until the next meeting.
Do we need to, do we also need to approve, though, the, in the brackets, as you noted, as well as on the closest principal arterial road? Or is that a?
That was a part of the, that was a part of the size of the-
The sign side, okay, so we're good on that, that moved ahead, okay, thank you.
Yeah, I'd recommend we don't parse, you know, one item under number four, so I'd-
That's fine, that's fine, I just wanted to make sure it didn't get dropped.
Yeah.
I missed that.
Good point.
Yeah, so, so right now, we've done the forty-eight, forty-eight, and signage on the closest arterial. Those are, those have been a consensus, if I'm not mistaken, correct?
That's correct.
And then we essentially did not pass the motion for a thirty day requirement.
It's a fifteen day, Mr. Wilson.
Fifteen day, yeah, we did not, we, we, no, we didn't do, that did not, that was not adopted either.
That's correct.
Okay. Okay, is, I don't see anything else in there on item four that we have to do. Is, do you see anything else in item four, Van, that we need to discuss, or Christie, or any board member?
I don't see anything else in four.
All right, is there anything in five? I, you know, I can read four, but I can't read all of five.
Hold on, we're gonna, we're gonna move to our next technical exercise.
Yeah, I was excited there, you know, my fault for not having, you know, the, you know, the, the language in front of me, but it was exciting when I could see, you know?
Can you see five?
I can see five, but just the first three lines. Oh, okay, now you got it, all right.
There you go.
Terrific.
Okay. So. So, the number-
This is on the sign, this is the-
Right, this is correct, so this, the, the question here is what you put on the sign, now that you've got a forty-eight inch sign. And, well, I mean, you can see, I guess it's, you can see what the choices are, I mean, it's a major or variance, it's a major subdivision or variance request. Yeah, and so it's, one of those has to be on there, and B, you know, that's fine. I mean, the Platte County Planning Board and our phone number and our website are, that's good. And then the C and D, yeah, those are the options, really, I guess, in this one. C, image of the plat, and D, the date of the public hearing. So, but the, the thing of it is, if you, if you have a sign and that you can create that has the same information on it every time, then you, then you're going to limit the cost of that and the effort to produce that. And I guess by saying that, I guess I'm speaking to C also, because of the image of the plat, but if, and the date of the public hearing, because they could all change after you've done it. So really, if there's a link to the website for whatever the issue is, whether it's a variance or a major subdivision, it seems to me that that would have the most current information on. And it would, if it changed, it would be posted there.
All right, does anybody have, any board member have a motion?
I move to accept the language of five, A, B, C, D.
All right, is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it, this is Patricia Blick.
All right, motion made, seconded, we're in discussion. Any discussion on this?
I'm just going to say, from a discussion standpoint, some of the, the, the comments that Mr. McLendon noted, we could have kind of a big generic sign that has space where we can write stuff in it. You know, we used, in my previous life, as a staff member to a commission, we would do big signs for upcoming hearings and would, would put in the date of the hearing. We actually would do a description of what was happening, but maybe what we can do is have a sleeve where we can slide in a photo of the map, or maybe we can even put a QR code or something on it that would link back to the, the county site, so I don't want us to consider, not consider that there might be some flexibility options.
Yeah, what, you know, any other comments? The chair has a comment.
I'd like to say something, if possible, Chris Sanifani, I live right next door to Paradise Valley, and having a picture, a diagram of the proposed subdivision gives you an idea of the scope and size of it, and how it fills that particular property, that plat. So I feel that it's really important to make sure that there is a diagram of the, of the plat, of what's proposed.
Any, any board, well, any other comments? We'll just, you know, open it up and-
You know, Mr. Chairman, as Joe White, I, I would tell you, we, we do these signs often, they're generic, so that you, somebody that's passing by knows who to, who to call. I think Mr. McLendon makes a great point. I mean, if, if for every, every development, you have to create a new sign, I'd say that's expensive. I, I would ask the question, who's, when we, for instance, this is City of Little Rock again, we make an application, we pay our filing fee, we pay for the sign, the staff gives us the sign. All the signs are, are the same, and they tell anybody that's passing by who they should call, what's happening and who they should call. And so I would tell you that trying to get the image of the plat, plat and the date of public hearing for every different sign, every different development, it's going to be tough.
I have a question, please.
Who's that?
That's Meredith, this is Meredith Hawkins. I understand Patricia's point and Joe's point, but it, a date of public, people aren't just going to, they'll see a sign and they won't think, oh, I need to stop and get that website and look all that up. Having a date of the public hearing is very important, and having an image, people are very visual. I think both of those things are very important, and as Patricia said, in her previous life, they made generic signs and were able to plug in, you know, at least two pieces of information, so you weren't making a new sign each time. There's a, you know, like a template that has the information in A and B, and then the image of the plat and the date of public hearing can just be put in depending on, you know, each development, et cetera. Thank you.
All right, any other, like I said, I threw this open to anybody, any other, now, now, any, anyone else that's on the call or on the Zoom meeting want to make a quick comment?
Mr. Chairman, this is John Killingsworth.
Yep.
Yes, I, I just feel like that the whole purpose of this upgrade of, of these requirements is to get a more equal- Balance between the developer and the, and the residents nearby. And just the fact that it's a little more cost or a little bit more trouble for the developer, you know, and the cost benefit. That's a small cost, whatever it is, with a great benefit for the residents, like Meredith was saying. They know the deadline that they've got to get busy and quickly uh identify concerns and be ready for this hearing. Uh, they have very little time, even the thirty days is very short. And to see the plat visually is very important too. So if we're trying to get the public more fairly treated, these are vital. Thank you.
Okay, uh, any commissioner, and then I've got a quick comment.
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, this is Christie. And um, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. McLendon, but doesn't the, the county staff make the signs and not the developer?
Don't know. Haven't had to make one yet. Uh, need to keep in mind though, that there's a website and a phone number. On this proposed sign. So if a person goes by and they're going, gosh, something's going on here, they can take their. Uh, phone out, take a picture of it and either go on the website or call us and tell, and ask us what's going on on that site. So it's not that hard, but even still. If we do do those other things, uh, th- there's gonna be a time element, I think, in there in order to get those signs made. Regardless of whether we do them or have, figure out a way to do them ourselves or get somebody else to do them. So you need to keep that in mind, because there's, there's a, a compressed timeframe here. And we need to be able to have adequate time to do all the things necessary to provide adequate notice.
Yeah, I mean, this, a- a- anybody else before I make a comment?
Well, I'll just, I'll just jump in again with my experience. Um, what we had was just a stack of, of. Uh, notification posters in our office, so when someone would come in and, you know, turn in their application. You know, we would give them the sign right there, say the date, you know, what is the project? We didn't have a picture, I admit that, but I think that you could have like a plastic sleeve, you can slide that in. And um, and then put the date of when comments are due or when the public hearing is taking place. So literally, you have a, a, a big. Marker and you can write that in. And um, I'm, I'm saying it's pretty simple, no- nothing real fancy, like um, not a metal sign, not a. You know, corrugated plastic sign or anything like that, but um, I'm, you know, I'm saying, keep it a, something simple that people can just take with them. When they drop off their application and say, you've got, you know, such and such amount of time to get this posted, send us a picture of it when you have it posted to verify that it's up or whatever. That's all I'm gonna say now, Chairman. It's all yours.
Okay, yeah, yeah, the, the one, one thing, you know, that initiative is, uh, is, you know, like, one comment was made a little earlier. You know, by somebody that, you know, that, that, I don't want something happening next door to me without me being aware of it. Uh, you know, my feelings are, are that, you know, that, that the initiative in terms of going to the website or. You know, the telephone number and, and I assume, Van, this is, is part, would be part of which I would do. If somebody called and, and, uh, and, and asked for, uh, you know, and say they didn't have any, any uh, uh, equipment to go to a website. Uh, you could ask to be, for it to be mailed to you, and that would be done, wouldn't it, Van?
Yeah, or email, yeah.
Yeah, well, you know, depending on what kind of technology they had, but you know, my, my, my feeling is that. You know, that, uh, that, you know, I'd rather have a generic sign, Patricia, just like you were talking about. Uh, that, uh, you know, cause we're looking at, how many signs are we looking at? Two signs, basically?
Mm-hmm.
Possibly.
And, and to have, you know, now, if there's an easy way to, but the question is, is if you have a sleeve. And you put some of the plat, uh, flats, uh, diagrams of the plat in the sleeve, then if there's no, uh, you know, if, all of them gets. Taken out by either interested parties or by some, you know, somebody that's doing a little vandal, uh, activity. Uh, you know, what, what was that? Would that be legitimate notice or would that be legitimate for the sign? I'm thinking, my, my feeling is the generic aspects of it by putting a website on. Uh, and by, uh, I mean, you can, you can, once we decide on the, uh, the number of days. Uh, you know, maybe there's a way that we could put, you know, uh, I mean, underline the connect, you know, connection, contacting, I'm sorry, underline contacting. You know, the, uh, planning department, uh, I mean, when the sign goes up, it's gonna be respectable size. Uh, and so I'd rather have it generic. I mean, if I was gonna, when, when I ran for office, I'd do, you know, four or five thousand of them, but. To do two or three, uh, you know, unless there's an easy way to do that, you really don't know. You know, even if you had a sleeve, you know, whether they're gonna stay in there or not. Uh, so I'm, I'm, I'm leaning more toward, I certainly want notice. But I'm leaning more toward putting a little bit of initiative on the part of the interested parties that see the sign.
Well, I had a question, one. How far away is this sign gonna be posted from the street? Is it even available for people to come up and take a notice or not? And then developers, when they're selling their property and their development. They always have a diagram and a picture of what it's gonna look at like. So what's the difference? I mean.
That's, that's a marketing sign in all likelihood of something that's already been approved, I would think.
Okay, well, maybe so, but it's still, it's still a picture and it's still. You know, something that gives people an idea of what it's gonna look like. Just a blank sign gives you no vision, no idea of what's coming. It's, it's, it's just really important.
Well, I mean, again, my comment stands, uh, you know, I think that the generic sign, a- at least that's what I favor, and that may not be, we've got nine commissioners, but. I favor a more generic sign and, 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 and looking to a little bit of initiative from those who are looking at it, but, you know, I may be in a minority. Uh, you know, we've got, uh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, this is Miranda Moore. I, I have a comment regarding the signage. Um, I, I'm in favor of at least, um, at least having a sleeve with additional. Um, I, I mean, if, if picture of the plat can't be put on the sign. Um, things, things like the wastewater treatment plant that goes along with the. Development, something like that's not gonna come to mind um, to most people. Um, when they see the sign, but if, if somebody could stop and have additional information about that, I mean. Going back to the thirteen hundred feet. Uh, I'm not even in that radius, but yet this still affects me tremendously. Because my property is at the top of the receiving waters uh for the effluent discharge. And I, I'm not even in the thirteen hundred feet radius, yet the thought of. People that this is gonna affect along the bayou was never thought of. So if. Information was at least in a sleeve. Um, that would be helpful when people stop to look at the sign to try to find out more information.
I'm not even, I'm just gonna.
Except for a commissioner, I'm gonna, uh, or a board member, I'm gonna sort of call the rule right now.
Okay, I'm just gonna say, you know, when my idea of putting out the image of the plat in the sleeve is not, not, not exactly like, uh, real estate where people take it away. Put it in something that's sealed, that's affixed to that sign, like you said, so you know, the, the delineation of the, of the. Area affected that is subject to the planning commission's review and approval. So I, I still stand by, I think we can put. A simple sleeve on there with an image of the plat, the delineation of the area we're talking about, and also the date of the hearing, because. Um, we could also have a situation where the hearing is long since passed and someone didn't see it until later. So I'm just. I, I still think that it's important to have that information up there. And, and I'll back it up to one more thing. You definitely are gonna have people who are not savvy enough to pull it up on the internet. So I think that the idea too, like you said, is for them to call. Have it mailed to them, or if it's a short timeframe, they just go down to the planning office. I think that's what, what people would have to do.
Okay, well, I mean, if, if, if you're, if you're encompassing, I mean, it's just me speaking too. You know, something, uh, you know, something that's a sleeve that is permanently there and that, and people don't pull it out. You know, that was the main concern that, that I had. Uh, Mark, I think you had a, uh, one at the floor.
Well, I was, I was just gonna say, Mr. Chairman, that. Uh, I think Ms. Bliss's point of bringing up a sleeve is just, that's a suggestion for how they can accomplish. What we've listed in number five. So however they do it and present that information and image, the date of the public hearing. I, I think that's, that's fine. So I, I, I think we should just vote on this language as presented.
Okay, uh, any other comment from any board member? Uh, Diane, call the roll, please.
Ms. Blick?
Sorry, I.
Ms. Ains?
Hi.
Ms. Connor?
Hi.
Mr. Wilson?
Hi.
Okay, it's a motion, uh, 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 motion, uh, as made and seconded and resolution's adopted, or the motion is adopted, rather. Uh, all right, uh, the next one, uh, and we're deferring on, uh, on the days prior to the public hearing, I guess. So going on to seven, Van?
Yes, um. Well, that's.
That's just simply a responsibility of the staff, right?
That's, that's part of the ordinance requirement, yes.
Right, is that, is that a change?
Yes.
Okay, and, uh, and, uh, what, what do you do now? You don't make any kind of, uh. Email and notices to the property owners association or?
No, the, well, there's, and typically, there's not many property owners associations in the county and, but there might, there are some. Uh, typically what we do, what we do is we, we post. Uh, we posted, yeah, uh, he, we post a notice, uh, on a website of what it is, and then. The applicant is, on the variance request, they're provided notice as to what it is, and they have our phone number if they wanna call.
So you really, you really don't, I mean, you don't do, nor do you, uh, would intend to do necessarily. Provide an email notice to, you know, property owners associations or individuals. You really don't know that you'd know who they were, would you?
That's correct. This, this is, this is taken from, in my estimation, from what. The city does with regards to all their organizations for, uh, neighborhood organizations where they have a, you know, president downtown and the whole business and. It's not that way in the county. There's just not many, uh, there's not many POAs. I'm not saying there's not some, and. We don't know where they are and there's no record of who the individuals are or anybody manning them or running them or anything else, so. We, if somebody, somebody sends us information saying, I'd like, I'd like notice on this, or they find out about it, we give it to them, whatever it is. But we don't know in advance who these people or organizations might be.
Uh, or remember?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is Christie, and there are in fact neighborhood groups out in the county as well as POAs who would be interested in knowing about these. Um, I know for a fact, so I think this would be a wonderful, um, service to provide to the county, to the stakeholders. I don't think it would be too much trouble. I've kept up email list myself. It's very easy, very simple. And so, um, it's not, it doesn't cost anything. So it, I think that this would provide a great benefit. Um, and so I make a motion. Oh, I'm sorry.
All right, Mr. Wilson?
I, I think that's too vague and unwieldy for the staff to manage. If we don't, if there aren't, I mean. I, I feel like anybody could, could say, you know, they had a property owners group and. I- if there's not some kind of uniform, you know, certification procedure for the county on. What constitutes a proper, I mean, a property owners association and, and the idea of. Uh, any known prop, or, uh, any individuals representing neighborhoods in the area, I mean. I could say I'm representing Ferndale and, you know, who's to dispute that? I, I just don't think, I think number seven should be, should, should not be part of this resolution, because it's. Uh, it's way too vague.
Uh, any other board member? I've got a suggestion. Uh, you know, uh, you know, cause to me, you know, there may be property owners, uh, and there may, may or may not be associations, but. I think, you know, if you added the word if requested, staff will provide an email, and so you, you, you make sure that. If my inclination would be that you, you get noticed, but you put a little bit of a monkey on the back of, uh, of the property owners associations and or individuals. Uh, to connect, to contact staff and request that they be put on, uh, either a general list or. Uh, I don't know that they'd want, I don't know how often would we do this, but I don't think the staff ought to have the burden of, I, I mean, I agree with Mark. Uh, I certainly wouldn't mind people getting noticed, but I think, uh, or, or neighborhood organizations getting noticed, but I think. That they ought to, uh, at a minimum, make a request to the planning, uh, to the staff. You know, that they want to be included in any notices, so that the staff wouldn't have the burden of making or mistaking, you know, that, uh, part of the. So I, I would be opposed to this on vagueness too, uh, but in any event, I, that's my ten cents.
Yeah, maybe. Mr. McLendon, are you accepting a short comment from the public?
Well, we will, but I wanna get all the, I wanna, I wanna get all the comments. Mr. McLendon is not chairing the meeting, uh. He's helping out quite a bit, cause I didn't have the information in front of me, but, you know, I wanna get, I will accept at the end of the discussion. Uh, and before a vote, comments from the, uh, public that's a part of it, but at this. From the board.
Gotcha, thanks.
Okay. Uh, any other comments from any board member? Okay, now I'll open it to the public.
Okay, um, thank you. This is Meredith Hawkins. Um. Waterview has its own property owners association, Nalan Creek does, there's several in Ferndale. So are you saying if those groups chose to contact the planning board staff? And would provide, if the property owner groups would provide an email list to the staff? That you feel like that would be something the staff could handle?
Van, you might need to speak to that. I, you know, I don't know that it's something like that's that difficult, but you may wanna address that.
I, I would say this, I would say your suggestion of adding if requested on there is okay and that. Uh, or is even advisable, I think. Uh, but if there's gonna be. Organizations, I think what we need is, is a, a representative from that POA or whoever it is to contact us. And put a, put them, put the organization on the list with them being the contact person, and we send it. If there's something comes up, we can send it to them and they can notify all whoever they're, they want to in their organization. You know, rather than us trying to keep up with who's in or out of their organization. I think a contact, that's the way I think the city does it is. Is, uh, uh, they have neighborhood pres- uh, organizations and presidents or representatives, and they have a list of all those groups and. And then when there's a, a, an issue, they, I don't know if they notify them if it's in their area or if they just notify everybody in general, but. Whatever those representatives are and then their responsibility to notify all their members of whatever's going on.
Okay, yeah, that makes sense. Thank you.
All right, well, I, you know, I, 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 it is, I think there's a motion been made, uh, if I'm not mistaken, uh.
Um, no, but I will make a motion, um, to add, uh, if requested. At the beginning of, of seven, staff will provide an email notice to any known property owners association. I don't even know if we need known in there, but I don't guess it will hurt. Um, but I make a motion that we add if requested to item seven and accept the rest of the language as is.
Let me see, if requested staff will write an email, others to any. Uh, well, I think those are a bit, I, I like your, the first part of it, Christie, but I, I, I think that we, you know. Again, we're putting a burden on the staff. I, I would, I would, I would support that if we took out, uh, uh, no. And let that property owners association have the responsibility of contacting staff.
Okay, well, then I'll, I'll say to add, if requested staff will provide an email notice to any property owners association or individuals, et cetera. To the end of that sentence.
I don't know about the rest of y'all, and I know I'm not supposed to be involved in, in the discussion, but that, that certainly addresses any concern I have.
The only thing I would, I would add one little thing in there, though. I think we would respond to anybody who makes a request, so it doesn't even have to be in the area. I think we could even just say, if requested staff. "if requested" staff will provide an email notice to any property owners associations or individuals.
In that way it would read? I thought that's the way it would read, uh.
I mean, I think we can drop "representing neighborhoods in the area of the major subdivisions or variance request applications", or maybe take out some of it, because you could be somebody who lives, you know, not, who, who's making a decision about, it seems a little bit arbitrary to say in the area of the major, you know, what is the area? Again, we're getting back to that, 200 feet, 500 feet, 1,300 feet. So I think if somebody asks for information, they get it from, they will get it.
Yeah, I mean, that, that, that's okay. That would be certainly fine, uh, at least from my individual perspective, but you know, the, the concern I would have is, do they want ongoing? I mean, we're, we're establishing this that's going to be sent to the entire, uh, whoever puts it on there, are they ever coming, come off?
Oh, I thought that it would be, I thought it would be per project, you know? We're doing this project at, um, you know, 1,800 Pike Street. I'm interested in getting a copy of the application emailed to me. I didn't know it was in perpetuity. Sorry, I misunderstood that.
Well, I don't know. I'm, I'm thinking this is the, the, in perpetuity. I'm not thinking that's per project.
Mr. Chairman, upon request, i- i- if, if somebody requests information on the application, the staff's going to provide it anyway today. Is that not true, Mr. McClendon?
Yes.
Okay, I, that's, that's another reason why I don't think number seven should be in this ordinance at all. I think it's too vague, and it, and it puts an undue bur- burden on the staff to provide perpetual notice to everybody.
Well, right, right now, and, and trying to get us to where we are, uh, I think we're talking about, at this point, we're not talking about the entire, uh, number seven. We're simply talking about the amendment, uh, that says upon request, uh, staff will provide an email notice to any property owners association or individual representing neighborhoods in the area of the major sub, and, and you, let's get that one out of the way, and then I think Patricia had, uh, you know, something else that we might want to do about the last part of it, but right now, we'll just talk about Christie's motion, uh, to amend by adding "if requested", and then remove the word "known". Any further discussion on that?
Yes, I, I feel that, uh, as Patricia pointed out, or, or, um, also realized that this is her, um, project. So that's just not in perpetuity. Um, so I think that, um, that, um, that this would be, uh, an added benefit to the community, um, for it, for them to, to notice, to know about public hearings or anything else that comes up, final plat, anything that comes up, uh, in regards to this particular, um, project.
Well, right now, is that, does that address your motion, uh, or does that?
Uh, yes, if, so "if requested" staff will provide an email notice to any property owners associations or the, or individuals, um, representing, uh, neighborhoods in the area of the major subdivision or variance request application, because that kind of pinpoints that it's for a particular project.
Van, uh, you, you okay with the, uh, from a staff standpoint, if, if we add the words "if requested", uh, and I guess you're talking about your interpretation, Christie, is per project?
Yeah, uh, that, that's what I feel like, um, this whole section is about, um, is notification for the project.
Okay.
And not in perpetuity.
All right, Van, is that the way you understand it?
I, if I understand it, it's, I'll read what I think it is. "If requested, staff will provide an email notice to any property owners associations or individuals representing neighborhoods in the area of the major subdivision or variance request application." Is that correct?
That's the way it would read if the, if the Christie's amendment is adopted.
We're good with it.
All right, uh, any further discussion by board members? Let me call, uh, vote on the.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mr. Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Van, what are you saying you're good with?
The, the language that I just read.
"If requested", and, uh, and then take the word "don't know" now. I think it's what Christie's motion was, Mark, and, uh, and then the rest of it stays the same.
Okay, staff's good with, with that.
Uh, that's what Van said.
Yes, but, Mr. Chairman, I don't think we have a second on that.
Well, not at this point. I mean, I think we had a question.
But that's what, that's what we said, yes.
Yeah, okay, and now is there a second on Christie's amendment?
Our second is, um, and just to ensure the language is correct, "if requested, staff will provide an email notice to any property owners association or individuals representing neighborhoods in the area". Is that correct?
That's the way it would read if, uh.
I would second that.
Okay, any, any further discussion on the motion to amend? Van, call a roll, please.
Ms. Eames.
Hi.
Ms. Blick.
Hi.
Ms. Connor.
Hi.
Mr. Wilson.
Nay.
All right, motion's adopted. Now we're on the main, uh, do I have a motion to, uh, adopt as amended? I don't have.
Sorry, what was that? What was that, Mr. Uh, what was that, um?
Well, we, we amended it, uh, and now, uh, I was asking for a motion to adopt as amended.
Do we have section eight?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, we have, we have one question, I think, in section eight.
Okay, well, I thought we were, okay, just section, is section eight, I can't read.
Get it up here, read. Hold on a second. Here we go, or another technical adjustment.
Is section eight, is that, is that in conjunction with section seven?
Uh, no, it's another, it's a section, it's on, on, unto itself.
Okay, well, then, what, what I'm saying is that I thought we just voted on Christie's amendment to add, uh, "if requested" and to remove the word "known".
Correct.
That was adopted.
That is correct. Three and I, three, one.
Yeah, but we did not adopt the motion, uh, we did not adopt the language as amended.
Correct, Mayor.
Okay, and that's, that's what I was asking for, if there was now a motion since we amended it, to adopt the language as amended.
I make a motion to adopt the language as amended.
Okay, motion.
For number seven only?
Right now, yeah, we're going to number eight.
I'm sorry, I, I just don't understand what we're voting on here.
Okay, what we're voting on, we, we, on number seven, we, uh, amended number seven to read "if requested" uh, at the first of the, uh, sentence, and then we removed the word "known", uh, uh, in the text of the sentence, uh, and we voted to amend that in the way I just, uh, the way I just indicated. Uh, and now I was asking for a motion to adopt number seven as amended. And I thought that was probably appropriate.
I made a motion then to adopt, uh, seven as amended.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, uh, any discussion, any further discussion? Now, I did say I'd take public comment when we were prior to vote. Does anybody in the public wants to comment? All right, Van, call a roll.
Ms. Blick.
Hi.
Ms. Connor.
Hi.
Ms. Eames.
Hi.
Mr. Wilson.
Nay.
All right, now, uh, the motion's adopted, uh, the language is adopted as amended. Now we're in number eight.
Correct. Uh, yes, and the only question here is, um, the, this, in terms of how much notice the, uh, the, the applicant needs to provide the staff with proof of their not, their notification, uh, four or six days, uh, and, and what it should include, which we've already kind of gone over what it's supposed to have. Can you see, can you see number eight on the?
Yeah, I, I can see a.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Ms. Eames.
Um, I, uh, this change that, um, I had requested earlier, it's just state more clearly what is needed by the applicant more clearly, and, um, and, uh, so I'd like to make a motion to adopt eight with the option of six days prior to the public hearing, a- along with the added language.
So your motion is to include all the language that is, uh, reflected in number eight, uh, and to utilize six days rather than what presently, I guess, is four days?
Yes, sir, that's exactly right.
All right, does everybody understand the motion? Is there a second?
I'll second it. This is Patricia Blick.
All right, motion made, seconded, discussion by board members. Staff, have any comments?
No comment.
Uh, public, any comments? All right, on the.
I have, I have one comment, um, just quickly. This is Meredith Hawkins. Um, on the Pajus maps, I know there was a concern mentioned, uh, much earlier, that someone was, um, justifiably concerned that people who owned property in the area would not get their mail about the project, um, if they didn't live on the property, but on the Pajus maps, and I feel like they're updated fairly regularly, uh, in my experience, it gives the, um, like the PL box of the person, or a lot of the people, you know, live in Little Rock or Benton or wherever, that own that land, and so oftentimes, it's the owner's actual, not just the physical property address, but their own, um, address where they regularly get mail, and so I think that would be less of a concern because of Pajus keeping up with, with addresses. And that's it. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other, uh, comments from the public, uh, any other comments from the board members? Uh, Christie's motion is to adopt, uh, number eight, uh, with substituting six instead of four, uh, and including A, B, C, and D. On the motion, call a roll, uh, Van, if you would.
Ms. Blick.
I think you broke up.
Ms. Blick.
I said aye.
Connor, Ms. Eames, Mr. Wilson.
Hi.
Hi.
Four eyes.
All right, now, now can we, is there another? Is that finish us, or is there another?
That's it.
I believe we're finished.
Wow.
For now, for now, we are.
Yeah. For this stage, this stage, but, and we won't have a public hearing on the February meeting, but we will have is this amended language, uh, and then the, the, the call to be made by the board for those dates.
Those dates, right.
And then we'll have a public hearing in a, uh, in March, if that's done in the February meeting.
All right, uh, any, uh, I don't, I don't hear a motion to adjourn, so I.
Motion to adjourn, Karen Connors.
Okay, before, before I call a roll on that, uh, you know, let me apologize for, you know, not having the, uh, I'll blame Van for not being able to get me enough print to read, uh, had it a little earlier, and, uh, and then the, uh, the shovel turning for our, our system got me coming right home and getting on the, on the meeting, so uh, I hope y'all, uh, tolerated the, uh, the, the, a bit of a helter-skelter approach to chairing a meeting, and I apologize for, uh, maybe adding to the time, so, so with that, uh, any, any further comments by any board members? On the motion to adjourn?
I think Kar made it.
Uh, yes, I did. I've been waiting.
Just click your button to say goodbye.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you.
Create everything you do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye.